All rise, hear ye, hear ye. The Hammond County Commission Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Bobby Hahn presiding, and please remain standing.
I appreciate everyone's attendance tonight for the Hammond County Legislative Body, November twentieth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. This time I'll call on Commissioner Roddy Long for the night's prayer.
Father, we just come to use night in this season of Thanksgiving, Lord Father. Just thank you for this community, for everyone that lives in this community. Thank you for the honor of serving this community. But most of all, we want to thank you for giving your son down the cross for us. Lord Father, we just lift your name up to them. May everything we do be pleasing in your sight, and we ask all these things in your name.
Now I call on Stan Harville, Commissioner Stan Harville, for the pledge.
By flag, please, each and salute, pledge.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation, united, equal, liberty, and justice for all.
Someone be seated. Commissioners, if you will, make sure your mics are turned on and you take your attendance by pressing present. Again, I want to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. We have a fairly light agenda. Before we do get started, I want to make two or three announcements, I think, will make the ship run smoother. At our committee meetings last Monday, we had a little bit of a confusion on people coming into the well. The commission has a rule that you're not allowed to be in the well after a meeting. So even if you're invited, if you need to speak to one of your commissioners, if you'll just get their attention, as we've done in the past, they can come to the railing, or meet you in the hallway, or whatever's convenient for that. We've had a few cases, unfortunately, of people wanting to speak out during the meeting, injecting their opinion. Everyone in here will have a chance to come to the mic and speak about whatever they agree with or disagree with. So you can take that opportunity in just a few minutes. But please refrain from adding commentary or speaking out. I have talked with the sheriff, and I will say this, I can't make you not talk. I don't have that. But what I can do is, with the help of the sheriff, we can let you leave the building to carry on your conversation. It's a disruption, it's uncalled for, and we will not have it. Really, we haven't had a big problem with this. I've had a couple of people mention it, needs to be refreshed, is audio and video. Remember, if you want audio or video, you must be in the back of the room at all times. Well, let's keep those in mind as we move forward, and we'll have an outstanding meeting. To kick things off, I would like for Harley Kelly to meet me in the well. Harley.
I don't know if you guys know this guy, shirking around here. One of the most kind, gentle human beings I've ever played with.
I am.
Top of the world, top notch, and he got smiled on. Maybe he just wanted to go to the stadium. Such a joy.
Very dependable, very dedicated, everybody's heart. Congratulations on the tenure, and good luck on your next job.
Okay, look this way, guys. Okay, thank you. Hamlet Kelly, Delaware. Years of service award, the Arctic Kelly, Port Bayla, ten years of faithful service. Thank you so much.
He's used common sense and kindness.
Well, we sure do appreciate everything that Harley does for us, and like I say, his kindness is... We were speaking of that just a minute ago, and his kindness is a show of strength, certainly not a show of weakness. So we do appreciate that. Now, we will, let me remind you that we do have rules for public speaking, public comments, that are located in the back of the room, if you need a refresher on that. We just ask that you keep it to three minutes, keep it clean, air your heart out, it's fine. We'll start tonight with our public comments on non-agenda items. We have a few already signed up. We'll start with Ms. Kimberly Coffey.
My name is Kimberly Coffey, eighty-two twenty East Andrew Johnson Highway, Whitesburg. My thing is, everybody seemed to be a little disrespectful towards Ms. Green last week over the fourteen thousand dollars. Okay, that's neither here nor there for me. That's money that goes back into our county. So that's one thing that I'm proud that she stood and done, because poverty rates in two thousand twenty-four, our poverty rate was seventeen point two. That is affecting approximately eleven thousand people out of the total of our population. That shouldn't be, guys, sorry. And our children's rate is eighteen point nine. No child in this county should go to bed hungry, no child. I don't care who they belong to. That's not right. Kids did not asked to be here. They were brought into this world, and it is everybody's business to make sure they're taken care of. So in comparison, the Hammond County poverty rate is higher, and the overall Tennessee state average of around thirteen point eight. Now, this is from two thousand twenty-four, they haven't got the rates for this year yet. So, I mean, I understand that, you know, we gotta do this, we gotta do that, I get that. But we better be thinking about our people that they don't have a voice. That's what you all are hired and put in place to do, is to help them, help make them, help make the community aware of being able to help them. Because sometimes they can't help theirselves, sometimes. Sometimes they put theirsself in that position, but if they have children, children shouldn't suffer for what the parents do. I see it too many times. Thank you.
Sure do appreciate your comments, and Ms. Coffey, if you have any suggestions on where to take this, please. I, my heart goes out to those people, especially this time of year when it's getting cold. Thank you for your comment. Next, we'll have Gwen Holden.
My name is Gwen Holden, I live at eighty-one fifty West Point Drive in Talbot. I want to talk about the greedy five. I want to talk about the greedy five. How's that? Okay, thank you. I want to talk about the greedy five, the five road commissioners who took taxpayers' money that they were unlawfully paid and did not, and have refused to pay back. They are Charles Anderson, Danny Bale, Gail Free, Tom Hyde, and Delbert Nix. The current local road commission law and private act says that road commissioners are only supposed to be paid monthly for road commission meetings that they attend. You know that, the mayor knows that, and county attorney Chris Capps knows that. Everyone knows that the greedy five got paid for four road commission meetings in two thousand twenty that they did not attend. The meetings were canceled, nobody attended the meetings, and nobody should have got paid. You get invoices from Mr. Capps every month. His bills include charges for his work in trying to help the greedy five keep the unlawful payments for meetings they did not attend. You need to stop doing tax... You stop, you need to stop taxpayer dollars, giving away taxpayer dollars to pay the county attorney to help elected officials keep money, which was over forty-six hundred dollars that they were unlawfully paid. And don't give me the garbage about how they missed the meetings because of COVID. County commission continued their meetings during COVID, and so did other groups. Most just observed social distance and wore masks. The greedy five need to pay them forty-six hundred dollars back, and you need to stop paying for an attorney to help them keep the unlawful payments. Like I said, this is crazy. I didn't say it the first time, but it is crazy. If you are going to pay the county attorney to represent anyone in this matter, the county attorney should be standing up for the county and county taxpayers to get unlawful payments back. That's it.
Thank you for your comments.
Chairman Hahn. Let me ask a question, the cell phone setting on the banister, is it recording? Being we're not allowed to do that?
I have no idea if it's recording.
That might be a good question to ask.
This is for, this is for my duties with the newspaper.
They don't make allowances evidently, they said everybody had to go to the back with it. So we don't need to show favoritism.
Chairman Hahn, we've honored the press before with the phone setting down to record. I think it'll be fine, this is the press.
So we have a double standard? Evidently.
Like you're allowed to sit up here because you're a commissioner, but these folks have to sit back there because they're not.
The only reason I'm allowed to sit up here is because I'm elected commissioner.
I understand. Election or not, it's not an extent.
Well, that's my opinion, sir.
Anything else?
Not at this point, but thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely. Next up will be Louis Chan. Yes, sir. Ms. Nolly, will you put your phone down, please? He doesn't have his phone. No, you cannot, we made that clear. Don't make this difficult.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not.
No, you don't, you never. Mr. Chan.
Louis Chan, East First North Street. First of all, I want to congratulate Mr., I'm sorry, I forgot the last name, but anyway, Harvey, thank you. Before recently, I seldom show up here, but the few times that I need to come here, he was always at the gate. And it's, it's always very nice to see him. And I do not know him enough, but I won't be shy away and then reserve not to imagine that he is a royal person to his own faith, his family, his friend, and the society at large. That I have to guess, so to speak. But what I can observe is the long-term service. I really appreciate that. But most important, is the last point I haven't made yet, but that is the most important, is the friendliness, like the chairman say, is always a smile on the face. And that is the American, I think, outside of America, think what American is. Friendly, open, and unduty. All right, I'm here today, I want to talk about, again, is the five oh eight, Wes, Second North Street, Mr. Anderson's office.
Mr. Chan, that is an agenda item.
Okay.
Wait and come back, and you can discuss.
Okay, that's good. That I feel even better, that I devote all my time, not all the time, to you, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Leo Shalup.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name's Leo Shalup. My address is five six six five Chestnut Oak Drive in the Seven Oaks subdivision. First of all, I'd like to, uh, thank the road commission for finally coming out and fixing part of the flooding of the culvert. I also want to thank Chairman Hahn to help motivate it to get it done. That is the one part of it. During the process, it was explained to me it will take two weeks, it took over a month to do that part. In the process of doing that construction and replacing the culvert that was ninety percent full, I went up there periodically to see the progress of it, and it looked like that the culvert was at the wrong angle, and I brought it up to Commissioner Hahn, contacted Mike, I believe, and I met with Mr. Jeff Weisgarber that day, and they brought a gentleman in and did a transit on it. He said it was a five-inch drop. So they shot the transit, and the employee said it is a five-inch drop. He invited one of the neighbors that's bordering this ravine to come out and look at those measurements through her own eyes, untrained. And it came out to be three inches, but there's still a drop. That is now finally done asphalt cement on the ends, but here's the problem. On the end where the water comes out, it hits probably almost a two, a foot and a half of dirt. And Mr. Weisgarber explained to me that he can't do anything, he can only go three foot. So that water's going to gather up in that culvert, and it's going to create a nest of mosquitoes. I took him over to the curb where the main flooding is, that's flooding four houses, over a million dollars valued property, that our houses gotten flooded and damaged and everything, and other ones. And they milled it by a machine that was on a Bobcat. And I said, it hasn't even gone through the first layer of paving, there's done three pavings. He explained to me that they're going to build the curb up and then resurface that area. Well, that's, the curb, he's going to do it with asphalt. I said, why aren't we going to do it with concrete? He says, we don't have a machine. I said, why don't we just borrow one from the city or T-Dot? He goes that we can't do that. It is now two and a half weeks later, and nothing has been done. So the flooding problem is not resolved. It's like having a fifty-seven Chevy, working out the body damage, putting on new paint, but it doesn't have a motor or transmission. It looks great, but it doesn't run. We need to finish fixing this problem, because the flooding is not solved, especially the ravine also in the back of our yard. I'm just bringing it to your attention. I know I'm out of time, but I don't know the remaining of the story, but I, what he's telling me that is stormwater for that ravine, and it seems like road commission and stormwater is not communicating. I just want to bring it to y'all's attention. But lastly, I do want to appreciate having that culvert replaced and fixed, thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, we'll stay on top of that. Lindsey Horn.
Lindsey Horn, fourteen forty-one John Sevier Drive. I'm not generally able to attend these meetings, but I do watch them on YouTube. And after watching the last few commission meetings, I felt it important to come in person and speak. First, I want to make it clear that I am not here at the behest of anyone else but myself and my own convictions. I'm here to speak on the treatment of Commissioner Green. Commissioner Green is not the commissioner of my district, but I believe that she does a good job in representing the concerns of the citizens of Hammond County. I'm certain that if she and I sat down and talked, there would be many political stances on which we would not agree. Yet even if we do fall on the opposite sides of the political spectrum, I see her as someone who truly cares for this community and wants to do right by it. She asks questions, calls out impropriety and misconduct, and stands firm in her expectations for accountability of this body. And yet she is treated with contempt and condescension, and told that her actions are harassment and disruptive. From where I'm sitting, all I see is an elected official trying to do her job. It is my stance that whatever negative personal feelings some members of this body may have for Commissioner Green, they should be put aside when in this chamber, and the focus should be on working together to best serve and support the citizens of this county, even when it may be uncomfortable to do so. Like I said, I don't always agree with Commissioner Green, but I applaud her efforts, and I think that hers is an example that the rest of this body should strive to follow, not subdue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all we have pre-signed up. Do we have anyone else on non-agenda items?
Mike Johncox, thirty-one twenty-one Three Springs Road. I wasn't at the committee meeting, but I, I did watch it on the YouTube also. And what I want to comment on is the, the solid, the bulk waste. It's disgusting. My day, I, I really hope everyone here would go talk to the people in Hawkins County, Jefferson County. You know, I go to both places weekly. I was over in Hawkins County today. I live a mile before I get to the Hawkins County line. There is no sofas, mattresses, totes, garbage sitting out on the side of the road. All the way in, I took. I go to Jefferson County, I take one thirteen. Once I get past, what is it, White Pine there, I don't see it. I think it's a waste of our taxpayers' money, be picking up other people's stuff. You know, we want all be property owners, well, property owners, take care of your own stuff, you know? I just think it's something that needs to be, be looked into. I think it's been, it's been abused, and I see it, you know, just coming in here tonight. I only come down a little bit on Three Springs, need more St. Clair. I passed eleven piles of stuff sitting on the side of the road, waiting for you guys to come pick it up at your expense. Some of these, I'm pretty sure are multiple times, and they're probably rental units that people clean out. It shouldn't be our tax dollars paying for this, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else on non-agenda items? Down to agenda items. Three minutes on agenda items.
Once again, I would, I would like to talk about Mr. Anderson's office that was on sale. And seems like it's already been approved by the financial committee. I almost want to make peace with myself and just let the whole thing go. Put aside the feeling of possibly I'm being tricked into a belief that the county had already entered agreement with Mr. Anderson before. It was so, therefore I give up the chance to negotiate with Mr. Anderson. I almost want to let you go, and I want to graduate that you guys got it and I did not get it. I did not have a chance to use as a five oh one. But then I got documents related to that purchase yesterday. And one of the document is the contract that the mayor's office entered with the local real estate office for one-year contract of consulting. I wonder if the chair know this? Because in that contract, beside the mayor, the chair has a chance, has the right, to call the service upon it. So was it being, if you know, then had that contract, that agreement being approved by the committee, is it necessary? Because in my mind, as a layperson, it's a need to call out for a bid for the public, well, from all the other companies, real estate companies, that capable to provide this service to the county, rather than just entered one-sided. At the same time, that is one point in the contract that excluded a lot of the real estate company to, has the ability to be qualified. That is a $1 million of the liability that pay insurance policy paid by the consulting company. Most of the people, most of the company do not have that. But if we brought in the search, probably the nearby, especially Knoxville, much bigger than us, they should have similar kind of the company to be able to provide a service. One more thing is, in the contract, that is a 5% to 7% of the commission, that may be illegal because
Thank you for your comments.
you excluded the sellers the ability to negotiate.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else with agenda items, comments on agenda items? C9. We'll now move down to item two, excuse me, item three. We have two items there. Item 2A is appointment to the E911 Emergency Communications Board of Directors. We do have a letter from the mayor. I'll read that to you. The E911 Emergency Communications District Board has a vacancy due to four consecutive unexcused absences. Deputy Chief Chris Weisgarver was removed from the board pursuant to the TCA 786-314 Title VIII, Chapter 44, due to extenuating, or excuse me, unforeseen circumstances. To fill that, the mayor is recommending that Deputy Chief Chris Weisgarver be reappointed to the board to finish the term that expires August 31, 2026. Deputy Chief Weisgarver is a valuable asset to the E911 Board and it serves to our public safety agencies. That sounds a little bit conflicting there, but he, Chris Weisgarver ran into some unexpected absences, and the way the law is written, he had to step down. The director of the E911 Board is, of course, Eric Carpenter, and Eric supports him being reappointed. So do we have any questions?
Motion to appoint.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Horner. No questions? Let's vote to motion. Okay, we have 10 yea, 1 no, 1 abstain. Of course, we have two Commissioners absent, so we do have a majority on that. So Chris Weisgarver will be reappointed to the board. Next item, 3B, is appointment to the Public Records Commission. The Public Records Commission required at least six members. The county mayor is required to appoint three positions, and the remaining positions, three positions are officio members. The commission now has a vacancy due to the resignation of Sally Baker, county historian. The county mayor is required to fill this position, and I'm asking for approval to appoint Karen Nuna as county historian as required by Tennessee Code, annotated code So I have a motion. Mr. Mayor. Chairman, there is a topo in what you just read. It says, "Appoint Karen Nuna to county historian." She's actually being appointed to the Public Records Commission. That was a topo that I've just realized. Everyone got that? I have a motion.
Make a motion with your point.
Have a motion. Rodney Long.
Second.
Who was that again? Mr. Walker. Thank you. Any discussion on this? Okay, let's vote to motion. Motion passes. Moving down to item four, Calendar Rules Committee report. Chairman Thomas Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 4A is approval of the consent calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote to motion.
Did it come through?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got you.
Thank you.
Mine come out there.
Chairman Doty, quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I may be in the wrong slot, please, sir. I want to pull the minutes before we adopt the minutes from last month's meeting. So am I in the right place or the wrong place? If I'm in the wrong place, I'll wait and get it the next one, sir, please.
Chairman, I think consent calendar is where the minutes is. I will refer to our county mayor on that, but...
Chief. Commissioner has the right to have that removed, and we'll debate that in number five.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Let's vote to motion. Motion passes.
For item 4B, which is the approval of the regular calendar, we have an addition that we need to look at prior to approval of the calendar. That addition will go to the Finance Committee and would be item 7D, which will be Resolution 2525, a joint resolution of the County Legislative Body of Hamlin County, Tennessee, and the City Council of the City of Marsh Town, Tennessee, supporting the city of Marsh Town and Hamlin County, wishing to pursue the Tennessee Department of Transportation Transportation Planning Grant. And I put that in the form of a motion that we add that to the regular calendar.
We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Avery. We have any discussion on this? Okay, let's vote to motion.
Debbie Avery?
Yes.
Jamie Carden?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harvick?
Yes.
Bobby Horn?
Yes.
Tom Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson? Peggy Howell? Robbie Long?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Smith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, with the addition of the resolution in the Finance Committee, I make a motion that we approve the regular calendar items.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote to motion. Okay, motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Doty. Number five, items removed from the consent calendar. We had none?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we did, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Go over that, please, Mr. Doty.
Yes, sir. Item 5A, the items removed from the consent calendar at request of Commissioner Green. The minutes were removed for discussion at this point. Commissioner Green.
Would you pass those around and ask them to take one off the top and one off the bottom? Would you be so kind as to give this to our county attorney? Mr. Capps, please, sir. If you would so honor us for your presence for this. We had, the last discussion we had, it was on the Road Commission. The mayor told me that it did not change anything, so I brought you a copy of the old law and a copy of the new law. And my question to you is, is, wait a minute, let me finish, please. Well... You are a county attorney, sir. Well, I just had a question for clarification, and that is your expertise. Well, the, if I didn't understand, if I didn't misunderstand our mayor, the new law had everything the old law had. The old law required them to attend. It's not in this new one. And if we are not careful, we're going to fall in the same problem that we have right now. People illegally paid for meetings they did not attend. So my point is, that needs to be changed. It does not need to go through. It is written because it is not written that way. Commissioner Harvick, when I had a long discussion about it, he thought the old one stayed into effect. By what I read, when we put a new one in, that is the requirements that stand. And it does, the new one does not require them to attend that meeting to be paid. Well, the new one was brought to us in the last meeting. They're in the minutes to be sent to Nashville. But the new one does not require attendance. It is not in there. That's the reason you all had copies of it. I didn't want you to take my word for it. And I even ran a copy for our county attorney for his convenience.
Chairman Han, if I could help this out, I stated that they will not be paid without attending. That will be the stance of my department, his finance department. They will not be paid without attendance. So do we need to add that? Can I have the curbage in? I truly feel it's not necessary, but if this body so wishes, it's already been voted on and passed. If you'd rather take that up and add that line in, I have no problem with that. It's not the position of our county to pay them without attending. That is not any, any other idea. Very good.
Mr. Richardson?
On page two, basically this was written by CTAAS, and it has to go to the state to approve and bring back to us for redification. But on page two, it says, "Nothing in this act shall be construed as having the effect of removing any incumbent from office or abridging the term of any official prior to the end of the term." So the term is set by this, so we're not abridging any of that term.
That's not my point. May I apologize?
If we don't abridge the term, the terms and conditions of this contract are still in effect. The only thing we're doing is changing that they want to dissolve the commission at the end of their term, fiscal term.
Chairman, may I recall? If it is not clearly written in there that they have to attend exactly like the old one, it is not a requirement.
Well, according to that paragraph, it is.
Clarify, please, for me. Evidently, I missed something. The second page just refers to their term and so forth.
What Mr. Richardson just read to you twice. Okay, the top of this page. Mr. Richardson, would you read that to her one more time?
Please.
Nothing in this act shall be construed as having the effect of removing any incumbent from the office or abridging the term of any official prior to the end of the term for which they were elected. This is the original contract. So if you go to the four corners of that contract, it says you got to show up to get paid. This says that they're not going to abridge anything out of this term. All they're trying to do is the Road Commission, based on the new, the new Uniform Highway, County Uniform Highway law, basically doesn't affect anything anymore. They have no effect. So they're just basically taking this, will live by this till this goes into effect in 2028.
May I answer that, please? Mr. Chairman, may I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It does not state, however, that they must attend to be paid. In the past, it does not. This new one does not.
Chairman, last thing that I'll say, this new one will not go into effect until September 1, 2028. As Mr. Richardson just indicated, the new private, or the new private act will go into place at that point. The current Road Commission will be still in place until August 31, 2028. And as he indicated, it's under the old private act. The new private act will take place September 1, 2028. Thank you, Mayor. Anything you clear on that?
The old one will be gone, though. The new one will take effect.
On September of 28?
But the new one does not state they must attend.
We won't have a Road Commission. But we won't have a Road Commission.
We'll have it, though, till the end of their term.
Yes, which is September of 28, and that's when the old act expires.
Call for the vote, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you. I want everybody to be clear that nothing will change. The Road Commission is being dismantled when their term expires in September of 2028. This private act carries us up to that date, so they're still under the old rules.
So until 2028, if they don't attend a meeting, they don't get paid.
Right. Let's vote to motion.
Until 2028, we've got a new rule coming out.
But there will be no Road Commission.
Okay, let's get back in order. We need a second on this motion. Let's vote movement, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Doty. We have a motion. We have a second. We've already discussed it. Let's vote to motion.
They don't get paid. If they're still there.
All right.
Motion passes.
That ends item five, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Item 6A, vote on the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for Mr. Doty. We have a second for Mr. Horner. Any questions? Let's vote to motion. Okay, motion passes. Moving down to item seven, Finance Committee. Call on Chairman Rodney Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Go to 7A, the 2025 annual inflation adjustment for the, of the financial assurance of the Hammond County and City of Marsh Town landfill, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Doty, any questions? Let's vote to motion. Motion passes.
7B, purchase of the property located at 508 West Second North Street, Marsh Town, Tennessee. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Richardson. Ms. Green. Ms. Green.
Quick question. When I did a record request to get a copy of those two contracts, and when I went over the one for LaBelle, I don't think that ever came to this county commission. And when they had it back in 2122, it came to the commission to be okayed. So, is it legal, being that we never okayed that spending of the money? And I have copies.
I didn't hear your question. I can't hear over here.
We, the contract from LaBelle never came before this?
Yes, yes. And, and this, the mayor's office, or the mayor has a capability of making a one-year contract. It had no money involved. There is no obligation, only if there is a purchase or sale. And this, it's a one-year contract, and that, that's exactly why. If it doesn't work out, we can change the next time around. The last contract was in 2022, and it hadn't been updated until earlier this year.
Can I have a follow-up question, please, sir?
Yes.
So, the money that he is making, if I read it correctly, from the Anderson property, does not count? I'm trying to remember how much it was, but I'm thinking 17,000, but I may be wrong. So, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but if.
What I meant.
He is making, can I clarify my question, please, sir? I'm waiting for you to tell me I can clarify my question before I jump. Okay, thank you, sir. So, he is making money from this. So, my question, no more than what it is, why did we not go directly to the Andersons, give them 233,000, and save that amount of taxpayer money? Because we know we got to have it. Well, we feel like we need it, and I agree with that. Whoever made that decision, I agree with them wholeheartedly. But why waste money for two or three days' work at 17,000? Why not go directly to the Andersons and finish it through and not waste that money?
Couldn't agree with you more, but if I'd done that, we would have been in the same boat of why we didn't use a real estate agent. So, therefore, I chose to use a real estate agent, as has been done before in every purchase that this county makes. That, that's why I did that, and it, it's been, it's just been our process to use an outside entity to make these purchases, to remove any transparency, if you will, accountability. There you go.
Follow-up question, Mr. Mayor, if you please, Mr. Chairman. Follow-up question. So, if I understood you correctly, because this is only a year contract, it did not have to come to this commission to take care of the expenditure?
No, the expenditure is before you now. There was no expenditure until this is pending your approval just now. This, there was no money involved until this expenditure comes before you just now. This process all stops at this, at the legislative body. If this body votes no, there is no expenditure. If you vote yes, then you approve. There is no money change of hands until this body approves.
But that contract was written, I believe.
And the contract was for a real estate agent to negotiate. That's all the contract was for. There is no money change of hands. If this body votes no, there is no money changing hands.
Any other questions or discussion? Motion passes.
No.
I'm sorry. Okay. So, motion doesn't pass, we have to.
No, that's the majority.
Majority, this is a majority.
Check eight.
That's the majority.
No two-thirds.
I thought it had to be two-thirds.
No, sir, only, only.
Okay. My apologies, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay, no problem, but I would say we'd rather rein it in and be sure than to move on.
Yes, sir.
So, motion does pass?
Move to 7C, Budget Amendments. First one would be for the Hammond County Department of Education, Budget Amendment Number Four. That is the increase of $4,972,916. And I do put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Have any discussion? Let's vote to motion. Motion passes.
Go to C2, Fund 101. That's a general administration projects of $250,310. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote to motion. Motion passes.
C3, Fund 101, data processing of $13,021.8. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote to motion. Motion passes.
7D, which is a Resolution 2525. It's a joint resolution of the County Legislative Body of Hammond County, Tennessee, and the City Council of the City of Marsh Town, Tennessee, supporting the city of Marsh Town and Hammond County wishing to pursue the Tennessee Department of Transportation, Transportation Planning Grant. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Do we have a motion? We have a second. Thank you, Mr. Doty. We'll have to vote this off the board. Madam Clerk?
Debbie Avon?
Yes.
Jamie Carden?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Ed McGreen?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Horn?
Yes.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
He ain't here.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Smith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Long. Item eight, Public Services Committee, Chairman Mike Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have approval of the 2026 regularly scheduled meetings of the Hammond County Commission and Committees. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Any discussion? Everybody got a copy of that? All right, let's vote to motion. Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Richardson. Just some things to note. These are some dates. If you don't have them already, you could, may want to jot these down, starting on December 4th. We have the parade, the Christmas parade. And the parade starts at 7 o'clock, Commissioners. We would love to see everybody join and ride on the commission trailer. Mr. Long is in charge of that. Need to be at First Baptist Church about 6:15, 6:00, 6:15, typically dress worn. December 11th, we have the Hammond County Employee Breakfast, starts at 6:30 till 9:00, and I'm assuming that's at Rose Center. The 15th, we have the Republican Dinner at 6 o'clock. If you'll see Kyle Walker, he can take care of you on that. Then on the 19th, we have our Commissioners Dinner, starting at 6 o'clock, and you can see Jamie Carden for that. Just a reminder, December 8th, we have our committee meetings at 5 o'clock, right here. And on the 18th, we have our commission meeting at 5 o'clock, also right here. Are all minds clear? Guys, go have a great Thanksgiving, and we'll see you in December.
That is the Chamber of Commerce leadership.
There's ranges whenever some of them came in later.
There were new faces. I should have, and I did.
Well, I waited over there.
Hey. You did. I do the best. Better than I can do.
I'm sorry. Oh, here, I give you one. I've got plenty. No, I've got plenty. You need to be familiar with it. For what, for what you're inspired to do, you need to be familiar with it. There, hold on. I kept pointing. I believe in doing the right thing. I just wish I could say I think that they did.
Yeah, well, I don't.
Okay, it's just that.